We'll call the City of Orange, only Board of Appeals, we call the meeting to order seven oh four. Roll call, Dave Martin, President, Travis Travis, Bob Phoenix, President, Ed Aberbach. The Zoom, Mark Management Chairman, President, we do have a forum, all five members will be seated. Communications.
No outside of what we received from the applications. The correspondence.
Correspondence, yes.
So we see, we see the correspondence from Attorney Green regarding withdrawing. The multi-family aspect of his application. See the email from Nina Rhodes regarding the aspect with the multiple's multi. Mixed use and the support of that, and then when we see the legal committee from Terry to us.
Ed, do you have copies of all these correspondence?
I do.
Thank you. Acceptance of the July twenty ninth meeting.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion for two directions. On page two, item two, feet twenty-five, ten, one oh one Water Street, the second paragraph midway down. The language states Attorney Green stated the additional hardship was the regular. Six, five, two, it should be regulation six, five, two. And again, on. Page four, who is midway down variance Z R. The paragraph begins with various two Z R six, four, four, one midway down the paragraph. Attorney Green stated there was ample. Park in the vicinity, and I believe that statement should be parking. It is the only two. Directions I see that are necessary. And if nobody else has anything else, I would like to make a motion to appeal at the minutes as amended.
All second. All those in favor of accept as amended?
Bobby Phoenix.
And everybody, and everybody.
Three minutes accepted as amended. All business.
So all business is going to be new business, the continuation of.
Okay.
Twenty-five, ten.
Twenty-five, ten continuation, continued August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. One oh one Water Street, request relief. From zoning regulation six point five point five to allow for the square footage residential to exceed the square footage of commercial. In a mixed-use building for the purpose of converting an existing commercial building sixty-three unit residential building. You leave from zoning regulation six, five, two to allow residential use on the first floor of a mixed-use building. Relief from Z R six point four point four point one to allow for the conversion of a commercial building for multifamily building. Where the structure of what's a sidewalk or public street to allow for residential on the first floor. Property of W W Water LLC, application of Matthew H Green, that's where accessories map one oh two, block six, lot sixty-two. C C zone.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we. Modify the. Agenda schedule of events that we go from. Instead of reading the continuation and then the next application. And then going to discussion, I make the request that we. Go into discussion of the first application before we start the public hearing for the second application. Yeah, so we're just going out of order instead of doing two applications and then discussion.
Okay. Which is being seconded to. Changing very the schedule. Schedule, any other comments, concerns? Hearing done, all those in favor, Bob Phoenix.
And I.
Changed. So. All right.
Motion to accept the exhibit list as.
Motion to accept the exhibit list is presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the exhibit list as presented.
Those in favor to accept as presented?
Bobby Phoenix.
And everybody.
Okay, when the applicant please come forward, oh, there you are.
There I am.
There, look in the wrong way, name and address for the record. What you like to do, why you need a variance to do it?
Attorney Matt Green, three hundred State Street in London, Connecticut, first I'd like to thank Mister Phoenix for. Noticing those. Changes or amendments to the minutes, making me sound smarter than I am, so I appreciate that. As you know, last time we were here, we had, I had applied for three different variances. And I have submitted a letter to or an email to Mister Shook withdrawing the request for variance for six point four point four. Therefore, we are only looking for variance under the mixed use. Provisions of six point five and six point five point or six point five point five and six point five point two. I submitted a, an updated first floor plan which shows eleven hundred square foot of commercial. This application has been made to commission on the city plan. Which will be heard next week, the, the revision was done in conjunction with communications with the city planner. And as such, again, what we're asking for variance here is that. One, you allow the residential portion to be greater than the. Commercial portion. And two, to allow residential on the first floor. With those variances, we'll be able to go before the C C P and they are the ones who will then make a determination as to. The their. Interpretation of the plan and how they feel that it fits within the, the city plan. And hopefully that they'll approve it as is, or if there are any amendments with regard to. What has been presented. We can go forward there, but tonight what we're asking from you is a variance to allow us to go before the C C P.
Okay, for the record, we did withdraw the. Multi-family. Portion, multi-family request of this application, that correct?
Yes, thank you. You covered so many different things last time. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same, the one that we withdrew. Required the minimum square footage of commercial space?
No, six point five point five requires the square footage of. Commercial to be greater than residential, okay, we're asking for a variance of that. The question last time was. You don't need that variance if there's not going to be any commercial, you would only need a variance under six point four point four. Which was a, which is a, a multi-family. We are not moving forward under the multi-family, and I think that was the opinion you got from the city attorney. With regard to moving forward under two different aspects, whether it was mixed use or just residential. We're withdrawing the request for just residential and moving forward on the, the mixed use. So the mixed use under six point five point five, again, is that there is a requirement. That the commercial be greater than the residential, we're asking for variance for that. And also under six point five point two, there's a requirement that there can't be any residential on the first floor. So we're asking for a variance of that as well.
Are you offering any commercial at all?
Yes, eleven hundred square foot on the first floor, that was with the revised plan. And that was in conjunction with communications with the city planner.
And if we were looking for, if we were to hold you to fifty percent, what would that calculation be?
Yeah, as I said, let's see, the, the building both square foot is thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty. With the first floor having fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty, the upper floors eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty. So it would. It would. Being the first floor fifteen thousand, we would only be able to have, we wouldn't be able to develop the, the. Additional upper floors. On the fifty fifty, we have to leave some of it. Beta.
Alright, so. Just for round numbers, if we called it thirty-four thousand, you'd have to give seventeen thousand. On the first floor, you only have fifteen thousand. But there is eighteen thousand that you're looking to develop. On the upper floors residential. Plus, plus the fifteen thousand on the first.
Plus fourteen thousand, right, six hundred and twenty.
So you're looking for. Around thirty-four thousand residential in the thousand, you're looking.
Those square foot are thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty, so we're, we're looking to have about thirty-three thousand. Three hundred and forty square foot of. And these are, are round numbers.
If this would get. Worked out through Susan King.
Yeah, so we have submitted a plan with C C P, which, again, we've updated the first floor plan, everything else has stayed the same, so the first floor plan. First floor changes which shows eleven hundred square foot, so we've actually gone from sixty-three units down to sixty-one.
Now eleven hundred square foot is commercial or the first floor is commercial or?
Commercial in some, some aspect, it's not residential.
Yeah, okay. No. Ed. Ed, any questions?
Just out of curiosity, what are you envisioning to use in that commercial space, wha- what are you thinking is going to go in there?
That, that is to be determined, I think the market will dictate that. So we will, that will be determined at a, a later time.
And how will that be accessed, does that, does that go right into the courtyard area on the street level?
It will be accessed through the front. So the entrance from the front courtyard.
Okay. Yeah. And the number of units in terms of efficiencies versus, versus those with bedrooms, is that pretty much the way it was before?
Yeah, it changed a little bit. And I apologize, I don't have the updated.
Okay, that's alright, I, I, as I remember, there, there was, in my opinion, there seemed to be a lot of efficiencies.
Thirty-six studios, thirteen one bedroom and twelve two bedroom units.
Yeah. Okay. I don't think I have any more questions.
Loaded question. No, you're not supposed to ask a question if you don't want an answer. If you didn't get. Is this what it takes to make this project work, I mean, i- if we stipulate. Five, ten, fifteen thousand square feet of residential, is this dead? I mean, commercial?
Yeah, I mean. Look at downtown, look at, and look at downtown, a lot of downtown, and right now. The, as I stated before, the, the market for retail, the market for restaurant, the market for commercial. Is, is not there, so. If this gets shot down, and you're, what you're basically saying is that you want. Eighteen thousand square foot of retail, and that's just going, or, or commercial, and that's just going to add to another eighteen thousand square feet of. Vacant space, unfortunately. Hopefully someday that the market will turn around, we don't know, but in the market, we are where we are today. But I think what's important here from the zoning board of appeals perspective. Is all I'm asking you to do is to make a decision to vary the regulations to allow for more. Residential than commercial. And whether that is one square foot more or seventeen thousand square foot more. I don't think. It, it makes a difference, I think that difference then goes to C C P. And that is their role, what I have to try to convey to you is that. There is a hardship. In today's economy, these regulations, the way they are written, as I stated before, the last hearing. That the, the, the city is looking to revise their regulations because they recognize that requiring. More commercial than residential does not make sense. So I'm asking you to vary the regulations, let us go to C C P, and no disrespect to you, let them be the self.
Aren't you also asking us to allow residential on the first floor?
I, we are, that is correct. I, we, we, we have that variance, but C C P could still say no.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, it's a site plan, I mean, no, it's a special permit. That we've applied for, so in order to get a special permit. You know, they, they could say no.
So whatever the board decides, they need to have. A square footage number of what they're approving. For the commercial space, you, you can't be ambiguous in an approval, there has to be something specific. Because it can't be put, the whole reason we're here. Is that the C C P cannot approve an application that does not meet the zoning regulations, thus. The requirement for a variance, but in the approval, you need to be very specific, so there's no in, in big movie. When it gets to the C C P, they know exactly what was approved and what the, what was varied in the regulations.
Let me, let me state this, I. When you're asking for a variance of a setback, and you have a, a ten-foot setback and you want it to be six foot, you're asking for a variance of four feet. I, I understand that, I'm, and I don't want to get into a debate here, but. And this, the regulation states the square footage in residential use shall not exceed the square footage in commercial use. So all it says is shall not exceed, and what I'm asking for a variance to allow it to exceed it. It doesn't say by, by the, the, the amount, because there is not a number that is associated with this regulation.
So the, the reply site plan is eleven hundred square feet. If this board makes a decision and just blanket says you can exceed it. And then, I'm going to turn compliments to you, we go to the commission and say, hey, I have a blanket variance that says I can exceed it. There is no number one way or the other, that's why variances have to be very specific as to what is more right, it can't be vague or ambiguous.
And then the other one is that no building with mixed residential and commercial, you shall have residential users on or below or beneath the first floor. And so that one. Again, just again, will allow for residential on the first floor.
What's the square footage on the first floor?
It's eighteen thousand seven hundred and. Seventeen thousand, I wrote that, it is first floor fifteen thousand seven to twenty. The, the, the only thing that I'd say with regard to the square footage, again, this amount. Of square footage was discussed with, and, and I'm not going to put words in our mouth, I, I said, but we came up with this. In a, from a meeting with the city planner, and that, that's how we came up with it, so. Were led to believe from the city's perspective that this is sufficient. For, you know, what they see in their vision for, for downtown for this building.
Well. I could have a minute to go through Deanna's language again. Ed, do you have anything?
No, I've asked my questions, you know. I, I, I hear you in terms of a commercial space downtown in that area, especially, that, that would be tough for some business to, to go in there, other than say, you know, some kind of a service business. And. I see you've got that commercial space up on the left-hand corner with separate access to the outside, which makes sense to me. So. You know, I think it'll be alright.
Do you have any idea how long the building has not been. A call, fully occupied though. Not that it's, I know it's been seen used, but a fully. How many times, pretty close to a decade. Was a lot longer than that, fully occupied?
No, I said.
I mean significantly.
No, it has not been fully occupied for more than a de- for more than a decade.
You know, it's been a peace field.
Put it this way, well, I think the last time I was fully occupied, I had a full set of hair.
I'm sorry. Can I have your interpretation of? The opinion of the city planner?
I, I.
Of the city attorney? Your takeaway, no, city planner.
I have not.
Deanna Rhodes. She, she said that to me at like four forty-five tonight.
Right.
Attorney justice was letter came to me at like five fifteen.
Oh, okay. Is this in her office or is this public?
To the record, that's.
It's in the record, no.
I, my interpretation is anything that's in our favor, I agree with it.
Well, unfortunately, it's not.
Okay, I, please know the plan supports the application of the variance being requested to reduce the required. Commercial square footage of the mixed-use development application, all elimination. Of all commercial space does not meet the strict hardship criteria. Okay, as the property was previously a hundred percent occupied by commercial tenants. Also, bank first floor commercial space is critical for creating foot traffic. Availability of goods service, okay, well.
So her opinion basically is saying that commercial space is, is important, and there's also. A, a program in place, a financial program in place to help develop commercial property, so. Her, I'm reading that as, as her opinion is that the elimination of commercial space is not beneficial for the project.
I, I, I'm reading this to interrupting, that is, the planning department supports the application for the variance being requested.
That's what I read too, which is kind of, it, it's.
So she, she is, I think what she's saying is she is. A fruit, she is in favor of what we are presenting. She doesn't want a hundred percent elimination of commercial, so the eleven hundred square foot that we're proposing with this, she is in favor of, that's the way I read.
In the first paragraph, I, I, I did the same thing, that's why I had to do a deep dive into the second.
An elimination of all commercial space, now, if you recall, my, my original application had elimination of all commercial space. She's not in favor of that, she said it doesn't meet the strict hardship and so forth and so on, I'm not debating that, but. First space, first floor, so she is just going and saying why it can't be all residential.
And then she's giving examples.
The availability of goods and a service in the subject building will not only benefit the sector residential tenants, but all business of downtown and resident. Or living in walking distance. Yeah, so I, I.
You know, goods, goods and or services, subject filling, will only benefit prospective residents or tenants. So I can't imagine how many, how much. Goods and services the tenants can take, have benefit from, if it's pigeonholed in a, just a small.
Well, not a square footage, it'd be a little bodega. That would benefit all of the, the residents, people walking by, if they're. You know, they want to come in and get a little sandwich or a soda or something. That would benefit, you know, I, I don't, I don't.
I, I hesitate to speculate on, on character of any type of business in commercial space, I agree with you there. It's, it's just that I'm not seeing in, in her description of what she believed should be. The character of the commercial space, I'm not seeing eleven hundreds being. Adequate.
Well, I, I, I guess I'm trying to understand when she says she's in support of the application for the variance being requested.
No, I agree with you, you know, it seems.
I read that the exact same way on every holiday, when every car dealer says, we accept all applications for credit. You know, they didn't guarantee, they're not saying they're going to give you a credit, you don't want to bring a new car, but they'll, they'll, they'll take your credit application is the way I read it.
She, she has seen our application, she says I am supportive of it. I think it's, it's, it's completely different, I think what she's trying to do in the later paragraphs is. Differentiate from the prior application of where it was only all residential. I, I think she's very clear in what she says here, unfortunately, she's muddied the waters with the additional. She should have just.
I, I hope she's. Trying to. My take, and my hope is that she's not trying to dictate to the board the exact number. On the first floor, that's, that's why. Doing that up to us to decide versus her.
So heavily influenced. So based on my conversations with Deanna, that would be my hope, as she wrote in the email, she's in support of the application. And exactly what you said, she didn't interject a specific number because she didn't want to. Influence the board, it's the board's decision to make that decision. She's in support of the application that the attorney submitted. Both her and the other risk are in support of it, but. She didn't want to, as Dave was concerned.
That was, well, that's my, my, my take and my hope that she did.
But, but to clarify, they are in support of it.
But the application that is being presented is for eleven hundred square feet, so, so, again, the way I look at the regulation and. So, so, uh, again, the way I look at the regulation and if you look at the regulation. And it allows to have more residential than commercial. Uh, again, that is the application and. But I, I, I don't wanna sound like a lawyer. But I'm, I'm gonna have to where I, I, I understand where you come with variance and I, and I agree with you at. On, on the number aspect ninety nine percent of the time, or ninety-eight percent of the time. I think the way this regulation is written, and again, it's a poorly written regulation, just, that's why it's being changed. But I think the way this regulation is written, it doesn't talk about numbers. It doesn't say there's a ten-foot setback. It doesn't say it requires to have. Uh, a thousand square foot of commercial, as I say, it needs to have ten thousand square foot of commercial. It just says that it can't have more, uh, residential than commercial. And that's all I'm asking for variance for. I'm not asking for a variance for. The amount that difference. I am just asking for variance for. The having more residential than commercial.
Attorney Green, I can agree with you on that, but you're gonna have to agree with me. That this board is empowered to set limits to it, you know, or a standard to it. We could. We can approve it, but with this caveat of a sorry.
I think you, you, I think you can prove, you can prove anything with a, uh, with conditions. I think they certainly have that power.
Um, like, and I think that's the direction we're gonna go.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But I, you know, again. I understand. Our vision, our hope. But there's also a reality. And you're asking a developer to come into the city and spend a lot of money to renovate a building. And as I explained last time, this building is a little bit unique because it is, it's set back off the beaten path. It's not like, uh, across the street where you walk in the sidewalk, you step into a door, where you can step into a restaurant, and you step into some commercial space, an office. Or retail or whatever i- it is. This is not the case here. And we have a lot of vacancies in downtown Norwich. A lot of vacancies in downtown New London. We have a lot of vacancies in all downtowns. You have to try to find a, 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 a balance and to have a wish, we all have that wish and, and be honest with you, it would be the wish if, if, if you could rent out. If, if commercial on that first floor fifteen thousand square foot was viable, that's what it would be. But it's not. You know, I think last time you made reference, it'd be nice to have a seventy-five hundred square foot restaurant. You're absolutely right. It would be beautiful. But in next decade, it's not gonna happen. It, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna sit vacant like everything else has. There, there are, you know, the, the tide is turning. But it's not turning that quickly. And the more we stymie development as we go forward because of. Um, our vision and our hope. I, I think the, the more we're gonna have setbacks. I respectfully disagree with Deanna. I know she's a city planner. Uh, I respectfully disagree with her with regard to her, her view of this building being commercial, but that's. Not, uh, you know, I've, I've explained. I also disagree with her with regard to her aspect of a hardship. You know, we, we're all entitled to our opinions and. Um, I guess that's why we have attorneys to, to come before you so that they can, you know. Uh, build the record appropriately, I guess, but listen, we, we all have the same. We're all here for the same reason. Uh, I don't wanna argue, I don't wanna disagree, but you gotta look at someone who's putting a lot of money into downtown. Uh, you know, you, you have a lot of people wanna come in and develop and, and. There's gotta be a. It's gotta be a master plan. And, and, and I'm gonna also say this, over a year ago. I offered some regulations and I, I know it takes time to change regulations, um, but. I've written regulations in New London where they get passed at two months. You know, so. I, I just.
To everybody in town this past week concerning that, these regulations are outdated.
Yeah.
And, and we, and, and there was a sidebar conversation going here. I really think the regulations need to be updated. These should not be continuously coming to the ZBA. You know, this is, this, the. This was the second one that you presented. The, the next one we hear tonight is similar in nature. We're continuously seeing this and i- it's an ongoing issue that has to get addressed. Um, because it's a concern. We wanna see development come to town. We wanna do it correctly. And to put it on the ZBA versus the town planner and zoning regulation is unfair to everybody involved.
Uh, and, but, but you know, i- it's interesting. And, and your references and I, and, and not only was I here, but I recall a prior meeting, I forget how long ago. Uh, the same issue came before you and, and, uh. Um. It. I, I think in part, as smart as we all are. Um. I think the people you have to listen to or develops, who, who are you attracting to this town, the city to develop? What are their ends? What, what works for them? And. I, I think that discussion needs to, to go somewhere. But again, it was my understanding, and I wish Deanna was here to speak to this. It's my understanding that the eleven hundred square foot that was put into here was from the result of a direct conversation. Of direct communications with Deanna and, uh, my client. So.
And I, I confirm that. And I said, she is in agreement, but she wasn't gonna write a letter. Giving them a specific number because that is stepping on their toes. It's, it's ultimately their decision. Regulation requires fifty percent, just fifty percent commercial, fifty percent. Residential in the building in its entirety. This board has the authority to vary that fifty percent to a different number. She wasn't gonna say very into this number. It's their choice, their decision. So that's, that's why she didn't put it in there, that I can tell you that both her and the other Niska. Are okay with the eleven hundred square feet.
Anything else you'd like to add? Uh, any other question? Anyone else wanna speak in favor of this appeal? Anyone else speak in favor?
Except for once, I mean, listen to your comments.
Yeah. And name and address for the record.
Sure. Just random, you know?
Okay.
Okay, I heard the comments about mixed. Us to ministerial, so it was not a review. Think it's like, we have two bedrooms, and one bedroom, they, they want the plans. Um, and of course, it's this project, uh, being recognized by the government office. And everything else, we receive the letter of interest from CBA. The CDM, method, and CBC, so, and as you know, whether it's started until it's polished. So we'd like to do it in a fast, dark basis, this project. We're talking about the same town, which was, that's, that's gonna be down. So what did you change the unit count from two, from sixty-three to sixty-one, right? And we really want three units. We make it larger and with.
How many was, how many two bedrooms before? First floor.
Well.
Yes, twelve.
Twelve now. How many was it before? Think of this eight.
There were, uh, thirty-eight studio and twenty-five one bedroom. There were no two bedroom units to put.
And this building has been vacant for about ten years now.
Probably more. I have to two for closures and auction, before it comes to auction, so.
Probably in excess of, well, it hasn't been. There have been some, uh, small uses in there, um, maybe five, six years ago, but I think. It's been in excess of ten years that has been.
Any significant significance of twenty-five or. At least twenty-five years of, like, boom, boom, booming business in there. It's also.
And, and during that time period, the city has been trying to attract commercial use, I assume?
So they're trying to attract whatever they could for that property.
Yeah, anything, right?
Well, a- actually, I think privately owned. So, uh, whoever owned it at the time, but certainly the city working with the owner at that time, just like many other. Property owners in downtown trying to, um. You know, trying to, to get it occupied in any way that they could.
And that's one more thing, as far as the first floor, you need to go to sixteen steps. If you go from there, from the water pond, you have to get those eight steps, it goes from the back. And it's set back by seventy foot, six to seventy-five from the sidewalk, you know, it's.
The address is still on water street, so.
If this is approved, would this, uh, uh, renovation happen all at one time? In other words, it would, would. Would, would like the first floor open and then you see how it goes and then the second floor opens if it goes well, that kind of thing, or would it all be in one shot?
It's all good in one shot because of the prior safety, uh, life safety and we have.
Okay.
Their system, the kind of system all done and get one signal for the, open the doors and everything. If we've gotten any money, hopefully the next time.
And I think we addressed parking last time around. There was plenty of parking, as I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak for hearing us? Anyone to speak in opposition? Any opposition? Any opposition? Anything else you'd like to add before we go into deliberations? Just ask that, uh.
Thank you for your time and.
Motion closed, public hearing. On the application, B twenty-five, ten. All those favorite clothes, Phoenix Eye.
Ed, I've been back, I.
Mark Benjamin. Um, deliberations. The twenty-five, ten, one-on-one, want to shoot, request relief from zoning regs, six-five-five, to allow for the square footage of residential. Who see the square footage of commercial and a mixed-use building for the purpose of converting existing commercial building to a sixty-three unit residential building. Relieve from sixth zoning regulation, six-five-two, to allow residential use on the first floor of mixed-use building. Leave zoning regulation six point four point one. Point four point four.
Point of water, um, relieve from, uh, CR six-four-four-one, uh, has been withdrawn from the application.
Thank you. So I missed the floor, we don't need it anymore. So finish with relief from zoning regulation six point five point two, allow residential use on the first floor of a mixed-use building. Discussion, and I get a motion. Then we can discuss it. Or deny. And then we can get a second, then we can discuss.
This is a regulation, we need to have knowledge.
You have a motion? We have a second, yeah. Uh, you have a motion to. Approve.
I have a motion to discuss. That's what I thought.
So the proper procedure is make a motion to approve. You get a second, then you discuss. And then, well, right, and for clarity, always make a motion to approve. Don't make a motion. I'm just clarifying that not, anything with these applications, always make a motion to approve, even if you're against it. Because when you make a motion to deny, you get this double negative in the votes, which confuses everything. So all motions should be to approve. And then move to discussion after the second. Not yet a motion approved?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Now we can discuss it.
Well. I just feel it. Yeah. You know. It's just inadequate and the number of studio units that are being proposed also. Uh, but that's not part of, that's not part of the application. I would like to see. This plan, is this or is this orientation to the north?
So this. Right, this over here is Water Street, right, and this up here is Market Street, custom, so. Yeah. We're okay if I have. Possibly a condition. Considerably.
If we, if we wanna go down there. But that would be.
Well. I've kind of. I know, uh, a lot of regulations have to be updated, fortunately. Uh, we're in a situation here as board that. We almost have to consider the, um. Community, the town. And the way the, the future is, the foundation, it's going to cause changing and will change. Um. And commercial. All over, realistically, whether it's Connecticut or all around the country. It's, um. More, more pronounced now with less people. Closing facilities, commercial and so on. All the stores are changing, they're leaving, selling, whatever. Bankruptcies. Um. Hopefully in the future it will improve, but the status right now, which when the situation. Um, residential property. Is, would be more effective for our community for some reasons, a lot of people, uh, need housing. And I feel that this would be more of a plus than what the top, and that the. The positive aspect of this was the last time, two bedrooms were not involved in this, but now you have the two bedroom. Which to me makes it better with, of course, uh, more pronounced deficiencies. Um. But I feel that they up, upped it to a point of two bedroom where before I thought it wasn't. Around here to more of a residential, uh, use, like I said earlier, that big. It's, it's needed, uh, for.
A lot of mixed motion about this. Obviously, there's a hardship, legitimately a hardship in the sense that. There is. It's demonstrated by the fact that the building has not been a whole commercial building. There's a, there's a hardship, uh. A legitimate hardship in the senses is not the viable market for, for the entire first floor to be. It's a question of how much, I think. I, I agree the eleven hundred square foot is not, it's not adequate. I, I just don't know what. I don't know what the magic number is. Or. I, I just, I'm not. Convinced the eleven hundred square foot is, is adequate. For commercial. Ed?
Well, you know, what strikes me is that this building has been vacant for years and years now and uh we have a, a kind, a developer here now. Who's willing to spend some serious money to fill it up with apartments. Um, and in order to do that, he's uh. Uh, you know, to address the, the issues here, he's agreed to uh keep an eleven hundred square foot area for commercial on first floor. My feeling is uh that's probably a, a good thing, especially since he's worked with the city council or. City planner, I, I, it sounds like has agreed with that concept, so I'm in favor of it.
I'm, I'm kind of the. The swing here. Um. I agree. That a thousand, eleven hundred is not enough. I don't, I don't think that's enough. I disagree with. I agree that Ms. Rose was throwing a number out there. And I think we need to put a condition on. I'm not a developer, I don't have an idea, but I was doing quick math with these numbers. And thirty-three thousand square feet of residential to thirty-four thousand of total usage is ninety-six percent. You know, we're asking for fifty. You know, at present regulations. Um fifteen thousand on the main floor. Wouldn't meet that number, expecting the entire first floor to be. Commercial, I can agree, that's not reasonable. I don't, you said six thousand. I, last month I said seventy-five hundred. Tonight, as I was doing the math, I looked at maybe five thousand square feet. That looks about fifteen percent. I don't think that's unreasonable. Um, there.
I was looking at the units plus the proposed commercial. Uh, and terrace area, so that's where I can.
The. You and I disagree, Bob, on the. The two-bedroom versus one-bedroom studio, I can appreciate your concern of these aren't high-end. I look at a second bedroom as a studio. At twelve thousand dollars a head to educate. Now, you just added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our education budget. We can't talk about money because it's not a variance. But, you know, financial concerns can't be that, but. We cannot just be the housing of Connecticut. We have to have reasonable development. The other side to what we've all talked about, the previous owner is a developer. They own restaurants and stores.
Correct.
He's owned it for a number of years and he chose not to develop it. And, and I mean, I, I know all of this, so it's like. Here this guy is, he's gonna come in and do something. But just because he's gonna do something, it might not be the best for knowledge.
Correct.
And, and because he's willing to do something, I don't want to chase him away. But I don't want to just give away the store. And, and I said it on the record and I'm gonna say it again. He shouldn't be coming to us like this. It should be getting worked out through zoning regulations and it's, it, it's. It's inappropriate that we're, that you're asking this board to come up with what's a reasonable amount of commercial space. Uh, I think it's the developer's only option, but it is not. Not in the best interest of the city long-term to be continued. It's like, right?
I've asked in comments, I, I've seen it more lately. And I've been on this board for years and we never had this, like it's late enough.
And it was. Well, this, this application actually. Forced me to actually start looking at um what everybody's talking about, and that's the need for housing units. Um, so I, I actually, uh, last weekend did a very deep dive. Into uh statistical analysis about. Residential housing units here in Norwich, specifically in Connecticut in general. But in Norwich, uh Norwich has nineteen thousand fifty-seven housing units. Of which sixteen thousand eight hundred are. So we do have a surplus housing here in, okay, Norwich. Um. Seven thousand, uh, seven thousand to sixteen thousand units are renter occupied. Nine thousand are owner occupied. So we have a good balance already. Um, in our last, in our last meeting. We approved another forty-eight, forty-eight units, I'm sorry, uh forty-eight units. Um, of studio, studio apartments. Uh, which will increase the renter occupa- occupation. Um, whether or not it, it affects the, well, it will, of course, increase the total housing unit, but the number of unoccupied. It may, well, so. You know. And then, then we, then I went looking at the. Complexion. Of housing that we have here downtown. We have. Again, the, the forty-eight units that we approved last week. We also have the Warhigan, which is studio or, or efficiency or what have you, um apartments that are. Not occupied by. Uh. The complexion of the occupancy, it, it's not, in my opinion, that's conducive to improving. Downtown. It's, it's, it doesn't, the, the occupants don't seem to be. The type, the type of clientele that most. Developing, um. Most city organizations uh look for with their redevelopment for vibrancy and. And especially for vibrancy, so I would. Because of the size of the proposed units in this and so many more. Um. I, you know, I concern, I'm concerned about the complexion. Of. The, the. I'm glad that. In my position as a commissioner on uh. The Harvard Management Commission. We are looking desperately to improve the waterfront, and this is a waterfront piece of property. Which will, will have a direct impact on the future development of our waterfront. So those are the factors that are, that are part. Putting me in the position I am. So I, in my mind, I'm thinking that. More commercial space, not the entire first floor, but more than is being proposed, I, I think. Is up to the creativity of the owner to, to bill and occupy. And right now, there's just no, it just doesn't seem like there's any other focus except creating small apartments. So that's why your number, my number, either one. It's better. Than, than what's being proposed. I uh, I think that's what. The only thing I would like to do is come up collectively as a group of the number. And as we move this to CCP, a minimum of that number, whatever number we decide.
Doesn't the CCP have some link on? No?
No. No, if it was multi-family housing, they would, because by a two-thirds vote. But multi-family housing and mixed use, two totally different types of development. So they had, they're going to review and approve and deny the application that's brought before them. But they can't, they don't have the authority to bury the regulation. This board has that authority. Sure, so I hear discussion. Um, and about coming up with something, working something out. Um. Chairman throughout, you throughout, um, when you're looking at the plans. I'm just gonna encourage that, look at the plans, look at the building design. Um, I think if you, if you go. Too big, five or six thousand square feet, this is my opinion, then you, you're kind of putting. More burden on the designer and the applicant, the way this building is designed. Um, you know, so. This section over here, if I did my math correct, is four thousand seven hundred and eighteen square feet.
Did that include the terrace and the? I'm, I'm sorry.
That it doesn't include the terrace, but that's just.
The space is going to the terrace.
Correct. And the hallway. Looking at this, and it's just my opinion, that if. You continue to discussions at five or six thousand square feet, that would. Create a, a, a more of a difficulty in design for the designer. Because as it is, you know, so whether it's all of that or a portion of that, if it was contained to that area. Would be, would be beneficial to the designer.
I don't think we were proposing a designated area, I think we're just proposing.
Yeah, but the way the building's, the point, and it's well taken, because that's one, I'm. Been adding up the, trying to add up in my head, not, I suck at it.
You're kind of wrong.
Um. That I was. I was envisioning that portion commercial. Because.
My caution was just going.
Because mainly because I focused on that. Mainly I focused on this portion is because they started with that portion. Versus the other, the lower half of the building. So could you, so, since you've been looking at it, Dave, could you see the commercial one-on-one, one-on-two, one-on-three, twenty-five hundred square feet being reasonable? Um, I was. The number I had in my, I had, the number I had in my head. I kind of came up with, with three thousand. Okay. I, I, and that's just a round number. Um. Three thousand square, two thousand square. So we're talking a little less than ten percent or eleven percent. Of the, of the total. Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I'm not, there's nothing magic about that, it's just, I didn't see. I guess, I guess part of it is, is I can't really see you doing much. With anything less than that. And that's my, my take, I, I just, I can't see you doing anything vitally commercial, anything less than. Than that, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not firm on that number, but I'm just giving you the number. That I had, if you think we should go twenty-five hundred, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I was just doing percentages. I, I, I wasn't looking at the plan. Um. I was looking at fifteen thousand on the first floor, give me a third. You know, and that's where I got the five thousand, but strictly on, hey, what's reasonable? I, I think the majority of us agree eleven hundred is too small.
Well, well, I didn't originally. Because I, I was looking at the overall picture.
Yep, well, we understand, we understand that.
You know, the way the community is and what is going on. Realistically, all over.
And we do, we understand your position. Yep.
And I know that we need more commercial stuff, but it's never been there, the way it should, industrial park, whatever you want to call it.
And we all know, nation-wide commercial buying.
It is, of course.
Like, there's.
Commercial business.
Right.
But restaurants or recreation.
You're right, brick and mortars, you know, commercial businesses aren't there, and it just. It, it's the way that we're generating our, it supports our city, so.
Right. Try to see more, yes.
So if you, if you look at the design of the building and try to think about, well, where we, where, and, and taking into account. That they've got an eleven hundred square foot commercial area in the left, far left corner. If you were to take the next unit over, one-on-one, which is six-on-nine square feet and make all of that commercial, that's about seventeen hundred square feet commercial. And um, it, it may be on the low side for the kinds of numbers I'm hearing. But I'm also thinking about, well, you know, what kind of commercial business is gonna go into that area in the city, in that building? And, and I'm, I'm at a loss for that. So I, I, you know, I would think that maybe doing something like that, saying a minimum of seventeen hundred square feet, two thousand square feet, something like that. Might be more realistic, based on. Um, uh, the, the, the possibility of, of, of uh trying to get some kind of commercial business into that area.
You can end up with that seventeen hundred you're talking about. You can take that seventeen hundred and divide it down into two, two commercial units for eight hundred and fifty a piece.
Yeah.
Places they do have, take out whatever.
Foreign game over eleven hundred.
What's that?
The foreign game over eleven hundred.
Well, that one, but he's.
Sixty-nine.
Just add that on, you're up to approximately seventeen hundred going into the next unit.
Right.
One-on-one, I'm at the other end as well. They, they think that there was last week, uh last meeting, I think there was. Uh, a thought. That was presented that that could be an excellent cafe or restaurant with the terrace out there.
Still sticking by that.
So there's your eleven hundred, and then you have the eleven hundred proposed for twenty-two hundred. And.
The one we just, we passed that forty-eight unit, which is. Four, that suggestion was a restaurant down in the water area.
So. We're getting. One, two, three thousand.
We need a.
Well, we can't dictate the use either, that's.
No, no.
What we say.
We can, we can come up with a condition of so many square feet. You know, right now, we don't have any conditions. It was my motion to approve. I'm looking for somebody that wants to put a condition on this. Um, I'm hearing eleven hundred, I'm hearing six thousand, five thousand, three thousand.
Well, we're talking ten percent, which is approximately three thousand, that's what we's kind of.
No, to fifteen hundred square feet would be ten percent.
Oh, the first floor.
First floor, we're talking thirty-four thousand.
They got, they're supposed to make fifty percent of thirty-four thousand, seventeen thousand.
Right.
So. If you, if you put it down at three thousand, you're just under ten percent of the, of the year. And that's.
Well, um, I'll go out there.
No, you can't, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm.
You said what?
I said three.
Three?
Your, your, your numbers are higher than mine.
Yeah, you're five.
But I mean, I'll, I'll go with yours, don't get me wrong, so I'm, I, I, if you think it's, if my three's too low, I, I'm five, six, eleven, three. And then you, and you're eleven, I think the three is a split. Personally, I, 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 I don't know that we need equivalent about five hundred square feet, only twenty-five, three, three thousand.
Yeah.
But I'm okay, I'm not. I just think it seemed like a reasonable.
Yes, we take all of our. You take all of our numbers born together and do an average, comes out to five thousand square feet.
Really?
Five, six. Three. Eleven, no eleven.
Well, why? Of the fourteen, sixteen divided by five.
Fifteen, it's not right. I'm sorry, you're right. But. Three. Three thousand, sorry.
Dave said he wasn't for the math.
Yeah.
And I, and I didn't, I wasn't trying to average anybody's, I was just, I, that was just the number I, I, I kind of looked at and. Looked at the eleven hundred and I'm like, I think it needs to be basically three times that large. Well.
Times, three times eleven, and thirty-three.
I got it, I was just using a round number, a thousand feet, yes.
Yeah.
I, I think three is reasonable and. This could all get blown up as CCP anyways.
Right.
And if this uh. Nothing says it directly, but if the. Nothing says it directly, if the developer can't do it. And there's no way to make this part plan work, they can come back again.
Yeah, if you make, um, well, you made the. Motion to approve, and I'd like to add a condition that no less than three thousand square feet would be added, would be. Uh, dedicated as commercial space.
I'll second the amendment with my motion. There will be thousands.
So a minimum of three thousand feet is what we're talking about right now?
Three, yeah, three thousand square feet.
Yeah, okay. Can we also, it, it, it sounds like. And well, it sounds like we're heading in that direction, which is, I, I'm fine, uh, but, uh, just to change it slightly, can we also talk about what, what Bob was talking about? The, the number of. Uh, small apartments versus large, the, the vibrancy of the re- residents, um, you know, I, I said last time and. Also said the same thing, was, you know, uh, an efficiency apartment is not a luxury department, in my opinion. Um, I don't know if there's anything we could do about that, too.
But I think that's outside of our, our, yeah, jurisdiction.
Yeah, I was afraid you were gonna say that. Okay.
Um, so you made the motion, I made an amendment, the motion with issue. Does that need a motion?
I think, no, I, I, I second your amendment.
Okay.
My motion. Both the whole thing, so.
As, as.
You want a clean motion? Motion to approve, yeah, clean motion, but also.
Uh, obviously by default, approving six point five point five. Is going to, by default, approve six point five point two, but we should have a motion that's clear for that one as well, just, just so they're both approved. Five point five.
She had two motions, yeah.
All right, so with five point five. Include the square footage or would, I, I mean, the condition or.
Yeah, I want to read it, I'll, I'll say it that way.
Okay, so withdraw your first motion.
Make motion to withdraw, make an original motion, sorry. You're the second, so it's going. All right. I make a motion to approve section six point five point five to allow for the square footage of residential to exceed the square footage of a commercial or mixed-use building. For the purpose of converting existing commercial building to a sixty three year potential building. With the condition. Minimal commercial use to be three thousand square feet on the first floor. And the sixty three units is the number that we're. Correct, we went from sixty one to sixty three, or did we go sixty three? So this is.
It's all correct, well, so the, so the, 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 the legal notices for sixty three. So technically, I mean, they've submitted plans for sixty one, but if they could figure out against sixty three, and if that was what the legal notice is, and I, I don't think fundamentally. When they just, when they decide that they can get their sixty three in there. Well, what that is. This thing has had so many variations over the last couple of months of plans and narrations that have come through. That I don't think anybody can keep track of, I've got piles.
Of them related to a conditional.
Well, I, I, no more than, no more than sixty one. Uh. So no less than three thousand square feet, no more than sixty one minutes. It's an actual unit. And that's for six point five point five. Because that's what was presented to us, originally they were asking for sixty three, but they presented to us the night sixty one. Yeah.
As long as it's all under six point five point five for the first motion.
No, less than three thousand. No more than.
Most likely be less anyways because of the space for the commercial.
Yeah, if we cut into that, so I will second that. Motion.
All those in favor, Victor Grant?
Uh, Phoenix, I.
Body on.
Good work, I. Ed?
Ed, every back eye.
Mark Benjamin, I. And we leave from zoning regulation six point five point two to allow residential use on the first floor of a mixed-use building.
Motion to approve. Uh, Phoenix.
I second that.
All those in favor, Grant?
Uh, Phoenix, I.
Body on.
Good work, I.
Ed, every back eye.
Mark Benjamin, I. And the second half of that variance was pulled, so that no action will be necessary, no action will be paid. All right. We are pushing past with conditions.
Thanks for your patience.
Hopefully, uh, I haven't tainted the next, uh.
Now they're saying, oh, man. Please make it work for us. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, gentlemen.
Boiler won't die in.
Now they turn Eric, so we need.
Application, eighty twenty five eleven, four eighty eight North Main Street, request from. Relieve from zoning regulation six point five point five to allow for the square footage of residential use to exceed fifty percent of the square foot. Of commercial use in advanced built, used building. Will allow one sixteen hundred ninety nine square foot commercial unit on the first floor equaling eleven point one three percent. Forty one hundred square feet of tenant garage space on the first floor. Equalling twenty six point eight six percent and ninety four sixty six square feet consisting of ten total residential units on the second and third floor. Equalling sixty two point oh one percent property of Seaside Capital, application of Alexander King Assessor's map. Eighty seventh lot two, lot fifty three, multifamily zone.
Okay.
Motion to accept. The exhibits.
Motion to accept the exhibit test presented. Uh, Phoenix.
I'll second.
Ask me to, I'll pull up all the plans so that you can see.
All those in favor to accept as presented?
Uh, Phoenix, I.
Body on.
Good work, I.
Ed, every back eye.
Mark Benjamin, I. Is it, it's been accepted, so. The, the application first.
I got that from Deanna when she was charged.
He's always in charge.
Oh, I know, and, um.
I think, I think, I think the biggest, I'm not real sure, but I think biggest. You is, just a final quote.
Yeah, that's, but I was reading the, um. And this is an aside, this is an aside, by the way. I've been going over the minutes of others, of the currents. And they do like.
Oh, we didn't the last one, so.
No, we haven't.
Next one.
Starting.
So that's what can, that's why I'm being consistent. We don't want to read the part here.
That's right. The side is.
Applicant, can we have name and address of the applicant, what you'd like to do, why you need a variance to do it?
Um, Alexander King and, uh, six ninety eight Main Street, Bradford. And, um, my partner, Chris. And, uh, we're requesting variance on the square footage of commercial to residential. Um, six point five five. Yeah. Um. We're looking at that because right now, um. We need to get residential on, um. We're gonna look at, uh, ADN compliant. Uh, unit on the second floor. And keep the first floor all, uh, commercials. Um, and the vacuum that is going to be. Uh, parking. Um, we're looking at that, just because everything, um. After COVID, um, the, the environment like we spoke about in, uh. In the previous, uh. Application, um, the environment's changed, and, uh. It's very difficult to let everybody, um, commercial, especially on the second floor and third floor.
Yeah.
Um, that, that is, uh.
So you're gonna leave the entire first floor as commercial?
Uh, yes, besides for the, uh, parking, which, uh. We added to the rear section. Um. Of the, so then on Main Street, as it sits, there, there's almost like a storefront. And, um. That. Is going to, uh, as, as it sits, as it was. Um, right behind that is, as it sits right now, would be. Um, what the previous owner had as a residential unit, that's going to be now considered all, um, commercial. Okay, um, so we're adding to that to try to get this, uh. A, a, a ratio of fifteen percent for commercial space. Um. And eighty four percent on, uh, the second and third floor for residential space.
So the parking is actually like a parking garage, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, the reason we had to do that is because, uh, the current parking lot, there, there wasn't enough. Uh, parking space to satisfy it, we, we also own a small lot, um, directly behind the building, which will also be useful for, uh, parking space as well.
So you're just going after. The percentage, you're not trying to put residents on the first floor, you, you're, you're maintaining the first floors all commercial. But then the staff notes, there's some questions about the parking.
Yeah, so the, so where, where the confusing came in, they, they had a survey, uh, and then on that survey, somebody drew in. The calculations. The narrative. For the parking, the parking plan, nothing lined up, but parking really is not the issue here. That they can meet the requirements of the parking, we just need to straighten out the plans and the narratives before they go refresh, so.
That's, that's outside of us?
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
I just put it in there, the parking as an example to.
All we're truly looking at is are we willing to give up the fifty percent ratio.
Correct, right, on six five five, on six five five. And I can show you, so this was the first floor plan with the commercial here of the first floor, so this, or it's Main Street. Then this side street.
And, and they would still be required to have commercial on the first floor?
Yeah, that would be this section here of the building.
Okay.
And it's so large, and I don't know why it's.
I just want, I just want to make sure we're not inadvertently creating something where they could put residential.
No, this would be commercial, and then on the second floor is. So this is the second floor plan, um, that shows. The two, two bedroom units here. So it's two bedrooms here, so everything in the second floor, then the third floor is the attic, which I'll show you. Right here, so over part of the commercial, or, or that commercial side, but this is the third floor, there's the unit here. And then the, the unit over here. Correct.
Correct, yeah. That one is a efficiency, the one where your mouse is on right now. Um, the other one on the third floor is a one bedroom, and then there's a mix on the second floor between one and two bedroom.
I just, I, I think I know what's going on, I'll put this up and see if there's some interesting question.
Yeah, that will. Yes, that's what, that's what I've been saying all along, since I saw it come through.
Yeah, at least, and, yep. Interesting. All right.
I see somewhere that you intend to have that parking area covered.
So parking area would be in here, Ed?
Yeah.
See where this garage door is?
Yes.
That, that would be the exit, correct, this garage door, so then it comes in on the other side.
Okay, okay, so it's already covered, is what you're saying?
Yeah, um, it would be one-way traffic flow through the garage coming in through Seventh Street, which is, um, perpendicular. To North Main Street, and then it would go out through, um.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
And, uh, yeah, the reason that, um, we did that parking situation in that garage, which a- as it sits, um. He, he was using it as a garage for lots of cars, and, um, the reason we decided to. Use that for parking was to, so we didn't have to file for another variance, um, for parking.
Okay.
Well, I, 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 it's a property I thought. David? I'm, I'm giving you questions, sorry? Bob?
No, this report. And, uh. This is a situation where we have a building that has a property, and it doesn't equal. As, as the wordness is written.
Right.
And we have to be.
Ed?
No, good.
Uh, to your point, Bob. You're not gonna, you only have two stories, you can get naked, naked, but when you get the extra one. He's given only two, two bedrooms, satisfies me, giving you a one-bedroom efficiency, because you don't want it. But I'm getting all commercial on the first floor, which is. Um, I'm good, we're getting parking, we're, uh. We're cleaning up an ice rink.
Yeah, yeah.
An ice rink for a long time. Anything else you guys like that?
Um, yeah, so you just said that there were efficiencies on the second floor, there are, um, one-bedroom units, there isn't one efficiency on the third floor. Uh, that, that matters.
Yeah, it's not our, it's, it's, it's not, but it doesn't, it doesn't, so. Doesn't change our, our, our decision that you process, but.
Um, yeah, the only other thing I, I'd like that is that, that similar to the last situation, um. It has been in four quarters a few times. And, uh. I think this section of town definitely needs, um, a little bit of, um, DLC, I think hopefully what this plan can bring. It'll, it'll bring that, and we love Norwegian, we'd like to see it, uh. It would be nice.
What else you'd like to ask, anyone else to speak in favor of this appeal? Anything else to speak in favor, anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition, any opposition, any opposition? Here's none, last chance, you guys want to add anything? I'm about to say no like they have. Is there anything else that's unclear about it, or? Here, none, gonna get a motion to close.
Motion closed, V twenty five eleven.
Body. I'm second.
All those in favor to close? All those in favor to close?
Uh, Phoenix, aye.
Bodhi, aye.
Good morning, aye.
Ed, everback, aye.
Mark Benjamin, aye. unanimous, motion is closed, we go right into the decision. V twenty-five eleven, four eighty-eight North Main Street, request from zoning regulation section six point five point five. Allow for the square foot of residential use to exceed fifty percent of the square footage of a commercial use of mixed-use building. Will allow one sixteen hundred ninety-nine square foot commercial unit on the first floor, which equalling eleven point one three percent. Forty-one hundred square feet of tenant garage space on the first floor, equaling twenty-six point eight six percent. Ninety-four hundred and sixty-six square feet consisting of ten total residential units on the second, third floor. Equalling sixty-two point zero one percent. Property of Seaside Capital LLC, application of Alexander King Assessor's map, eighty-seven block two, lot fifty-three, multifamily zone.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Um, I do understand hardship, uh, of the applications. Um, and considering the current condition and the proposed, uh, improvements to the property. It's primarily my reason for approval of the application.
Oh, I approve it, to see no problem. Uh. He's conforming to zoning every regulation. And it'll help the, uh, buildings. Look.
Dan? There's no commercial demand for second floor, second floor done, or going to that matter. Now, first, yeah, living in on first and none on second and third, so that, that's a legitimate hardship. The fact that the second, that, that you don't have, it, it's more than two stories. Yeah, the, the applicant is giving us, really, for all we can ask for, an entire first floor of commercial development, so, we're all crazy. So. I, I see the hardship as the size of the building, the number of stories exceeding the first floor square footage. So I will be supporting this, Ed?
Totally agree, I support it, uh, good use, uh, good project, let's do it.
Okay. All those in favor, Grant?
Uh, Phoenix, aye.
Bodhi, aye.
Good morning, aye.
Ed, everback, aye.
Mark Benjamin, aye. Great. Yeah, motion carries. That's what things, you know, it's a fifteen-day appeal period, see. See, right, yeah, they still have to make application to the commission.
So, and we'll, we'll go over that. Um, we'll go over the applications and plans, and we'll get all the details. So that we can end up before it gets to.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, thank you, Rich, for that.
Nice. Well, look.
Thank you.
Scott, for your, uh, we'll venture. Everybody's talking about the regulations and the, the, the commissions, they are working very diligently, yeah. It's like, opinion, too quickly, yeah. To do it, it's, it's just my opinion, to do it, it's a bold, yeah. Of the regulations, that's what, you know, it started out as, well, they, they passed the POCB, now they're going to. Approve the, you can paraphrase what I'm saying. Uh, now, it's, then they were going to implement the sections of the POCB, so then. It was, that, well, in the sections, POCB, it kind of escalated to. Once they realized, oh, well, we're gonna change this, we're gonna change this, we're gonna change this, cause it's all interconnected, and so we've been working with the consultant, plus I think. Um, my observations, I think. That's. Everybody pushing the city council, the city council's pushing the planner, and they're rushing this to get this done.
Yeah.
Um, I did talk to the other day, well, yeah. And, and it's something to work on, but it, but at the same time, you know. The board. We recognize it, and the city of Norwich, and just me, Deanna, and I, I've been here eight years. You know, Deanna and I have tried to change the process. Um, in a town, like, the town I live in, we're combined planning and zoning commission. The city of Norwich. The city council is the zoning authority, one of only, I think, two towns in the state, that up that way. But that also means that every single regulation. Because of the procedures in town, have to go through the city council. It's very, very expensive to change regulations. In my town, we wanna change a regulation, what's it cost us? The publication of newspaper. Um. But here, because of our ordinances and being an municipal code and the town clerk notice requirements and posting in the papers. It's very expensive, a simple, one page like this can be five or six thousand dollars. Um, so that's why.
Yeah.
Kind of went the route of, we're gonna just get it done and do it, so.
Yeah.
So Dan, Daniski and Deanna are working very diligently, I put in my two cents on a few things. Um, and hopefully. It's, it's been going out to other departments for review, I think it went to NCDC for review. City engineer's been reviewing it, it's a, from to me, my comments, I don't get it.
Well, I probably will be out of. Right. Wow, the doc that tells me I shouldn't buy at night. So I had my daughter bring me here. Fortunately, it's gonna put in a letter, so that I be out again, be out of here by January, I think I have to get somebody else in January. That's the problem, I, I wish I could.
And that's another thing, I know Deanna has been hugging the council and the city manager. Or volunteers.
I have a friend putting in an application tomorrow. Great. No, Ray's still mad.
I, I don't blame him. I've talked to him a few times, oh, sorry, but it's all.
Yeah, alright, that's it for updates?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn. Bob, Phoenix.
Second.
Bodhi.
All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Hey, hey.
Bodhi, aye.
Good morning, aye.
Ed, aye.
Mark Benjamin, aye, meeting adjourned at forty-one.
Yeah.
Oh.